Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the Fairfield RTM May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Joint Committee Presentation to Order at seven thirty-one P M. I will now be taking the role at the beginning of all Joint Committee Presentations. And I'll be doing it alphabetically. Matt Ambrose. Ken Asturita. Steve Barrett. Steve Barrett is here. Rob Blanchard. Lenny Bremen.
Present.
Peter Britton. Peter Britton is here. Christopher Carroll is here. Colin Colburn is here. Justin Contrado. Tara Cook-Lipman.
Here.
Nancy Donnie. Eric Juniak. Bob Alwenger. Alwenger is here. Lori Galdenzi. Josh Garskoff.
Here.
Drew Georgiades. Mike. Lisa Higgy. Is here. Margaret is here. Laura is here. John. Melissa Longo. Chris. Michelle McCabe is here. Megan McCleod. Mark McDermott. Scott Nickel. Chris, Scott Nichols here. Kristen O'Neal. Kristen O'Neal is here. Alex Ocampo.
Here.
Is okay. Sharon Pistilli. Pierre Ratsky is here. David Rock is here. Christopher Shea is here. Brooks Sparassino. Marcy Spoiler, I'm here. Jeff Steele is here. Karen Weckerman is here. Cindy Waldron is here. Jay Woke is here. Elizabeth Sesma is here. Anyone log on since? Nancy Donnie, I'm counting you here. Alex Bro. I'm counting you're here. Rob Blanchard is here. Mike Cardigan is here. And Sharon Pistilli is here. I got Tara Cook-Lipman. I am missing Representatives Ambrose, Asturita, Contrado, Juniak, Galdenzi, Georgiades, Kuhn, Longo, McCleod, McDermott, and Sparassino. If any of those members come online, please let me know. Let's all stand for the pledge. First, we will start out by hearing from our Director of Parks and Recreation, Anthony Calabrese, regarding the design costs for the facility and grounds upgrades at the Adaptive Recreation Center. Backup for this item can be found on pages one to forty-six, and this is Agenda Item Three. Welcome, Anthony.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Before you tonight to request five hundred thousand dollars as startup money, seed money for our Adaptive Recreation Center, came before you guys for Phase One and all three bodies. To do what four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the All Abilities Playground, that was unanimously, pretty much unanimously approved, I believe, by all three. Here we are, Phase Two, looking for design money. We're looking to retrofit the former Pilot House program at Grasmer. To become the first Adaptive Recreation Center in Fairfield, this building will be a hundred percent ADA compliant. It'll have approximately six thousand square feet of program space. Looking to include three multipurpose classrooms, one life skills classroom with a mock kitchen, one full-sized elementary-sized gym, gymnasium slash multipurpose room. We plan to move all our current Adaptive Recreation Programs to this facility. Those programs include our after-school chill TGIS drop-in Saturday program, our Adaptive Summer Camps, and our Special Olympics Training. We plan to add additional programmings, programs that will include cooking classes, life skills, musical enrichment, sensory programs, and physical movement classes. We're currently exploring a lot of different partnerships, talking to Fairfield Septa, Wolfgang Unified Sports, and Fairfield Public Schools, the Fairfield Red Storm. We're also working with two different universities at the current time, Southern Connecticut State University and Springfield College, to help provide students to facilitate OT and PT for the therapeutic recreation programs. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions regarding this item? Representative Carson.
Laura Carson, District Four. Thank you. First of all, when do you see this all coming together, maybe opening? Do you have any idea?
I'm thinking it's probably twelve to eighteen months from this timeframe.
And, um, sorry, sorry. And how much you think this will, have you thought about how much it will cost to run all these programs, or when you actually have it up and running, and all the staff you need, and how that'll play out?
We haven't, we haven't officially put together the business plan or the program, the programmatic with it, but we do anticipate offsetting a lot of the costs through program fees. Obviously, adaptive programming is expensive. There's a lot of smaller, lower ratio of instructor to participant, so there are some costs with that. But this is definitely a need within the community that we've identified. We've heard from the residents. We do plan on having a town hall on June third for that specific group. Hopefully, we get a good turnout for that to hear about the specific programs they're looking for, and then we'll get into a little more details on the budgeting part.
Okay, thank you, and it sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this item? Representative Carroll.
Chris Carroll, District Eight. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Anthony, I think I read it. I was just trying to find it again. Long-term, the cost of this, the investment, once you get this design work done and feasibility, it's about four to five million dollars.
That's what we're anticipating, yes.
Okay. Can you give us some sense of what that's, what that's going to be for? You know, because I'd hate to say, yeah, here's five hundred thousand dollars, go do the design, and for some reason, Board of Finance, representing this group say, oh, we don't want to spend four to five million dollars. I think it's good to know that now versus down the line, so thank you.
Yeah, no problem. We appreciate that, and that's why we're here.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item?
Madam Moderator.
Oh, I'm apologize.
That was my question. What's the four to five million dollars going to be spent on?
Yep. So the four to five million dollars would be to retrofit that current space that's there. The space that is currently in that facility is basically an old elementary school gymnasium slash stage area that was, that was built out into small, odd classrooms. If you were to walk in there now, it kind of reminds me of like a memory care facility where, you know, where they have like the little buildings and stuff inside. I don't want to call them like dollhouses, but that's kind of what it looks like. That can't be used for what we're envisioning in that space, so it does, all that needs to basically be gutted down to the walls and then rebuilt to fit our needs. So that's where that money is going to go. It's going to go to building that facility to have these three classrooms, the mock kitchen, to be a hundred percent ADA compliant.
But do we know things like the infrastructure, boilers, all of that? Is that all either built into it, or we know, I hate for this to be, no disrespect, a penfield, where you come back and say, oh, we need another two million for this, we need another three million for this. If it's four to five million, great, this is a great thing for the town.
So we did a preliminary conceptual with our architects, one of our architectural firms. They came in, gave us that ballpark figure of four to five million dollars. They've already looked at that building. They try, obviously, without ripping down any walls of that, going into that depth of thing. So again, this is kind of a high-level conceptual, four to five million dollars. This five hundred thousand that we're asking for tonight or next, next meeting, that will give us more of a deep dive into what actually has to happen. Are there any unknowns? Do we need to replace the windows? Because those windows are so old, and I'm making this up, so I'm not saying there's anything wrong with them, but if there were PCBs or something along those lines that needed to be remediated, this is that phase where they would find that, identify, and then we would have real construction costs and drawings to be able to put out the bid to get that hard number to say, okay, it's going to be five million dollars, and then we don't have to come back for more money. You're welcome.
Uh, thank you, Representative McCabe.
Michelle McCabe, District Four. Hi. First, this sounds wonderful, and I would think that it's something that regionally would be really important for a lot of people and a lot of families. Having said that, as a follow-up to Representative Carson's question, I think it would be really beneficial for us to see simultaneous, perhaps, once you have an idea of the cost of the actual build-out of the facility, if we could also see preliminary budget, revenue, and expense for the program. Because I think it would be, it would be challenging certainly for me to assess what the cost to the town would be for the build-out without knowing what the ongoing costs would potentially be for actually running programming in it. Do you think that's something that is on sort of the horizon for you to present to us simultaneous with whatever the final cost ends up being?
Yeah, I would anticipate bringing that with that final cost as well. You're welcome.
Thank you, Representative O'Neal.
Hi, Representative O'Neal, District Five. I also echo everything everyone has said. This sounds like an excellent program. I know that there is a need for this within the community, so thank you. But a similar question, just curious if you had looked into any state or federal grants that might help offset some of these costs or some of the ongoing costs of instructors, therapists, that kind of thing.
Thank you for the question, and that is a great question. We are in the beginning stages of applying for state funding to be part of the state bonding program. So our new grant writer is working on that currently with, with my department and the Capital Projects Department. I don't have a ballpark of how much money that could potentially be. I'm sure we're going to ask for as much as we can. You're welcome.
Any other questions regarding this item? I can't see in the quarter. Representative Shea, sorry.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. Chris Shea, District Two. Thank you for your presentation. Did I understand you, when you said twelve to eighteen months, that's for the design, right? When do you think the actual construction would be completed if it was within budget?
I don't think the design is going to take us twelve to eighteen months. I do think that that potentially could be design and construction. If we were to get this approved, the money is readily available at that point. We would then start working with one of our on-call architects to go forward with the design plans. If that was, you know, another six months, then we're out to bid, and I was thinking it's probably a year construction, but even that might be a little exaggerated or conservative. But I think twelve to eighteen months is reasonable.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this item? Representative Woke.
Jay Woke, District Five. Hey, Anthony, good to see you again. So my question is, I have a couple, maybe I missed this. Where is this, where is this building now in town?
This is off Exit Twenty-three on Ninety-Five South, corner of Colony and Meadow Brook, Meadow Brook?
Okay. So you're saying that the building, that doesn't, the walls don't have to come down. So in other words, in this building that we were proposing the four or five million dollars to renovate, it's just to renovate the, cut out the building and do it? You don't have to break ground underneath to see what's underneath the ground to test that and all that?
No. Yeah, correct. This is just interior of the building. The walls and everything, the building is currently used. The other half of, the other three-quarters of the building is used by Sullivan McKinney, and there's eighteen affordable senior housing units in there, so there are apartments on the other side of the building. So yes, this is all building structurally sound. Like I said, it's just a little dated, and the, I don't remember how long that lease, the lessy that was in there had that lease, but it was probably twenty, close to twenty years, if not a little longer than that.
Thanks, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Representative Havy.
Thank you. Lisa Havy, District Nine. It's less of a question and more of a can you find it? I got a call a few years ago. There's a missing time capsule at Grasmer. Probably not the right time to bring it up.
I've been tasked with a lot of things. That's the first time I've had that one, though, so.
So, you know, let me know if anybody comes across it. That'd be great.
We'll keep our eyes open for it.
Thank you very much. It's like twenty-five, thirty years old.
Thank you, Representative Sesma.
Thank you, Lou Sesma, District Four. Thanks, Anthony. I know I read it in the backup. The estimate does not include the potential for finding materials like asbestos that need to be remediated, and if so, what's the additional cost? Would you estimate for that?
I'm looking to see if Eli is online or David. I don't know that.
David, Mr. Becker just came in.
Snuck up on me.
If there were any estimates on what the remediation cost would be should some materials like asbestos be found?
Not, not a, not a specific number on there, but this current figure does have numerous contingencies built into it. Almost everything that we did, we added contingencies, including some for that, so. And part of doing this, this initial seed money, I know once you do that, you're buying into the overall project, but, you know, part of the reason that we're trying to come at this level and with a detailed thing is to try to address that before we, you know, go too far in. Those would be earlier things that we address, so if we hit a point where suddenly turns into, you know, something massive, we would come back. So we would address that at least early, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, assuming this, the age of the building, it's probably has a pretty high probability.
A decent probability for some amount of items, but the, you know, just the rest of, you know, this being the gym space, the rest of the building, as an example, you know, has been converted into housing and whatnot, so not something that's, that's, you know, through the, through the roof, like power-wise, most likely. But, but one of the things we would do is very early on, get a handle on that, and then update the boards accordingly.
Great. Thank you both.
Any other questions? Any representatives online that have questions? Please place your name in the chat. Seeing none. Thank you, Anthony.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too. Moving on, Fairfield Public Schools Executive Director of Operations, Angelus Papa George is here regarding Agenda Item Four, which is to increase a prior bond authorization to include the Fairfield Ward Light Tower. Backup for this item is found on pages forty-seven to one-ten, but the light tower is found specifically on pages one oh six to one oh ten. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So as you said, we did come for previous bonding for other projects. This was brought up as an emergency project, and it was recommended that we go through the bonding process to get this completed. This is the tower lights, the eighty-foot tower lights at Ward High School. During a windstorm, one of them fell to the ground. Luckily, there was nobody in school. It was a holiday. After that happened, we did investigate the other three that were still remaining, and it was determined that the welds on them were not in the best of condition, and for safety reasons, they were removed as well so that we could open the field and start the spring sports program. This capital request you have before you is to fund the additional cost to put the new light towers up. These would be the same towers that are currently being rectified at Roger Ledlow Middle School for that project. Since the last board meeting, I can tell you that we've also had some, the dirt tested, and it has come back as clean soil, so there will be no remediation needed for putting these towers up.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this item? In the corner, I think Representative Steele.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jeff Steele, District Three. Just a couple of questions as I read through this. One is that you had mentioned that you'll do this in-house, right? Are we talking about the same thing here? Utilizing the town's on-call services and managing the project in-house?
So yes, we'll manage the project in-house. We will use the town's on-call electrical contractor, so they already have the town bid to do the wiring. We will use a already existing grounds contractor to do the footings. The towers themselves, we're going to piggyback and get a, and request a bid waiver to use the same company that Roger Ledlow Middle School is using, since they've already gone to the bid process and were the best priced.
So not only does that save time, but does it also save money on that, doing it that way?
It does save some money without needing to go out to design by being able to do it in-house. We will, we will use our, our contractor will provide the drawings and engineering schematics for the new light towers. We did hire a separate contractor just to do a peer review on them prior to installing.
And then one other question. It was mentioned that the other two towers had, let's see, had design, structural failures or similar structural failures. Is there any insurance? Is there any warranty or anything on those that?
So, so further digging revealed that in two thousand and ten, there was a recall for an investigation on these particular towers. These were actually on the list of potential failure problems. Unfortunately, during that recall period in two thousand and ten, the company who manufactured them went out of business, they went bankrupt. So there's really not a lot of places to go after for the funding to get them replaced. We did have an initial conversation with the town attorney, and when we took the existing three light towers down, we saved the flanges and the first four feet, so if there is any type of way to go after anyone, we have the evidence saved and saved so that no one can say that we just abandoned it or got rid of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding this item? Representative Pistilli.
Sharon Pistilli, District Five. I, I think given all the renovations that we've done, it's unlikely, but we, do we have the same light poles installed anywhere else?
We do not. These were the, Ward was the only, only dis, or Ward light poles were the only ones on the recall list specifically from our town. We did reach out to other towns around and make them aware of the same recall list that they were not aware of. That being said, we do plan to this summer go out and have the light towers at Ledlow tested just as a precautionary because they are approaching the twenty-year life.
Thanks.
Representative Shea.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Chris Shea, District Two. Since the light towers are going to be replaced, I wondered, are there any, like, light pollution effects that have been noted and could possibly be mitigated now that you're going to do this replacement with neighbors?
Actually, glad you brought that up. The new light towers are LED with zero light pollution on them. The old ones were old mercury lights, and they had quite a bit of light pollution on them. There were fourteen mercury heads on there as opposed to the six new LED lights, which will give the same light on the field but not the pollution going forwards.
Thank you, and I guess they're probably a lot more energy efficient as well.
That they are.
Thank you. Representative Garskoff is online.
Thank you, Josh Garskoff, District Five. Can you please explain, so there was a recall in about two thousand and ten? The company went out of business, but we just kept the light fixtures up above all the children in the field for the next, whatever, fifteen years. Can you explain the process and why these haven't been looked at before?
I absolutely wish I could. However, the two thousand and ten was before my time here in the district, and I was not made aware of it, and doing research through the office that I took over for, there was no record, no, nothing showed. I can't even tell you whether they were actually tested at the time of the recall or if the recall was ever received. I did find out from some neighboring towns, when I let them know about the recall, that because of the company going bankrupt, there was no official notice sent out, as it should have been, so it was, it was a surprise to many people.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding this item? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Papa George. Appreciate it. Moving on, I'm not sure if we have Conservation Director Tim Bishop here. I don't see him online. I don't see him in the audience. I don't see Tim Bishop here, so I'm going to move on to the next item. One second. We have David Becker, our Chief Operating Officer, here to provide us with information regarding Item Six, which is regarding funds for the Commerce Drive Bridge Replacement Project. This is found on pages one fifty-one to one sixty.
Good evening. So this item is, the difference in the project is fully reimbursable. It's a hundred percent bridge reimbursement under lotsip from the state, but it needs to go through the three boards for approval. In order to do that, the project dates back to, I believe, originated around twenty seventeen. So if you ask why the original lotsip amount was in the two million range, and the project is almost double that amount, obviously, when you go roughly eight years later, the project is significantly more cost-wise. Good news is that from the town's perspective, we had allocated one hundred thousand dollars in bonded funds, and then the rest of it, which will now be, again, roughly five million dollars, is all state reimbursable. So it just needs to go through the boards in order to make that adjustment. So these are actual dollars. The project has already been bitted. Once the project went out to bid, and the exact dollar amounts were, were then known, they, the application up to the state was made, and, and then, you know, brought, approved for the full amount, and then brought back down to then go through the boards. So this is, this is the last stop on that. The Board of Selectmen's already approved, you know, the contract part, the state's approved the lotsip part, so just needs the grant part. Again, a hundred percent grant.
Thank you. Any questions regarding this item? Representative Carroll.
Chris Carroll, District Eight. Thank you, Madam Moderator. David, I, this has come up on a couple of issues since I've been engaged in this. We have a price for something from, what'd you say, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and nineteen? I'm just curious, how do these things get delayed? And what, I just want to figure out how we can do this better.
So I don't have the, the full history on this particular project, and we could get probably a recap if necessary. The bridge projects do take a long time in particular. I mean, going that far, I don't have the exact answer. Again, predates us. I know that, you know, our Capital Projects Group is now, you know, running point on this and trying to, you know, one of our objectives for this and really any project right now is trying to take a lot of those older projects and just do anything we can to get movement. But, but projects such as this do require, oh, there's certainly a lot of moving parts in order to do that, and the state being one of them. So, you know, usually a couple of years. I don't know why, all the way from two thousand and seventeen, I can certainly try to get a, and if you'd like to follow up, I can certainly get a little bit more of the history on it, but I did, my point is, for the bridge projects, it is not abnormal for it to be a three- or four-year process.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I give, there's one, we're splitting with Westport and Southport areas. You know, I, I give, there's one, we're, we're splitting with Westport in Southport areas, an example. They're diligently working on it and even that is taking, and actually, we thought we'd be doing it right now and it's another year from now just because of the sign and whatnot, so.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Becker. I do see Mr. Bishop, our Conservation Director, did log on. So, we'll move back to Item Five, which involves purchasing a floating litter boom. Backup for this item is found on pages 111 to 150. Hello, welcome, Mr. Bishop.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Sorry for my tardiness after the committee meeting. I got kicked off and got onto the wrong link, so here I am. Thank you. The item is explained in multiple documents, I think, that are part of your packet. I'll keep it short and summarize that the intent here is to install a floating litter boom that will collect trash in the Rooster River just north of the North Avenue Bridge dividing Fairfield from the city of Bridgeport. It's a joint adventure with the Conservation Department and sorry, sorry, Earthplace. I'm looking at different things here. The boom would be paid for and funded with, and one year maintenance by funds from the NIP fund and operated by main, operation. And the maintenance would initially fall to Earthplace to conduct those activities. The frequency and, and volume of trash to be collected is unknown, so we don't know how often. It'll have to be emptied or, you know, repaired or, or monitored with that will begin a frequency that we establish early on in the installation process. We think this is a great location. We're happy to be partnered with Connecticut Department of Transportation accessing state property from North Avenue. They have a small parcel there that affords us access into the water, so we don't have to deal with private properties along the river. We recently experienced a snag caused by a fallen tree in the river and Earthplace was retained by my department to break the snag and as there, within a week or two, had been an enormous amount of garbage floating. Some people may know there's a construction site of a large apartment building in the city of Bridgeport adjacent to the river across from this location, so huge pieces of styrofoam and other debris was collected there is, is probably similar to floating debris from this location anyway. So, we feel that they, they collected about 600-gallon trash bags worth of floating garbage. So, we took the lead and improved water quality of the river in a, in a given situation. So, again, this is a great location with, with easy access for maintenance. Couple of concerns some people may have, which are, are good ones. And they've been discussed is during flood or heavy rain event, would this cause any damage to private property or, or any property? That answer is no. The boom system does have a built-in tearaway. So, should, you know, a tree go floating down Rooster River during heavy rain, it would snap and not impede any, any flow. It does float, so it wouldn't impede, impede flow anyway, but it wouldn't catch any, you know, large debris and entanglement occur. Prior to that, like I said, we would be monitoring it frequently and should there be something in the forecast that is potentially severe in, in weather conditions that cause, you know, any impacts, adverse impacts in the river, then either my staff or, or Earthplace would disengage the boom to let water flow. We think this is a great project. One, because of the need, but also because it would, you know, burden on the town and the taxpayer as far as initial costs. It's a, the use of the NIP fund money is, is designed and put forth to, for, for collection of trash, which is, obviously does. And again, I, you should have documents with initial memo from me from February summarizing, explaining what I just said, some of the estimates. There's a photo. Some draft language from the town attorney for a contract, a letter from Connecticut DOT and happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Representative Zesima.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Liz Zesima, District Four. Good evening, Tim, and thank you. Great, great to hear about anything that could mitigate any flooding at the Rooster River. Is there anywhere else identified where this may be useful? I get this question a lot from neighbors and constituents. I'm up at the London's Brook area and we've been hit a couple of times. So, I'm always being asked if there are any physical mitigation efforts that we can install.
Myself and Earthplace did, did do some reconnaissance before we selected this location. One was, the initial location was behind the, the Board of Ed Building since it was town property next to the Rooster River. And, and again, backing up just the reason why we selected the Rooster was because of, it typically has poor water quality and floating trash. Just based on the fact that it runs through one of the densest parts of town and is adjacent to the city of Bridgeport with an even higher density of population and activity. So, out of our three major water systems, the watersheds downtown, I'll call it, this, the Rooster was, was an easy selection. The, the, really the location that we selected was, was due to ease compared to the Board of Ed site, which was difficult for physically anchoring the boom, the litter boom. Here we have mature trees and, and potentially some large rocks or, or the bridge abutment to actually anchor it to, which did not exist at the, behind the Board of Ed location. Also, flow and, and the geology of the, of the, of the river itself made, also made the most sense, so. That's, we, we did, you know, just to answer your question, we did look into the location and felt for those reasons, this was the best site to get the, the most volume of trash. Also, if you look in the south, the downstream side of the bridge, there has been, or I, I have at least seen a few times a snag with a huge amount of garbage down there, where it's almost created a small island that should be addressed as well. So, I think there's going to be no shortage of trash at this location being very effective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Carson.
Laura Carson, District Four. Can you just, I'm confused. In the scope of work, it says the total cost is 11,000 or 11, 760? I can't really see, sorry. And in the, it says here it's 21,760. What's the reason for the difference?
The additional costs is for the one year of Earthplace estimated maintenance. If it's, if it's less, then we'll be charged less, but that was, that was their estimate based on an unknown frequency of operations and maintenance. If the, if the collection device fills up in a week and might be weekly during the summer because there's more, possibly more activity and more trash floating, then it would be weekly. Maybe in the winter or the fall, it could, you know, be every two weeks or every month. We, we don't know. So, that, that extra 10,000 is for related to Earthplace costs of one year of O and M.
So, you have like a, what kind of agreement with them? Just go as, pay as you go?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if they charge, if, if it costs less than, than it should be less, I don't, I don't think they're just going to get, you know, like a, a blank check to, to go out there. I think the, the 11,760 is for the purchase of the device and then the other, the other dollar figure is, is related to their, their cost. It was, it was their estimate. If we don't use it, then we don't use it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Shea.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Chris Shea, District Two. Does, does the town have any system like this anywhere and have, have we seen this system and used anywhere else?
No, there's not. This is, this is a, an initial, I don't want to say experiment, but it's, it's an initial effort to, to address the, you know, floating garbage concerns. It ha, it has not been tried, so to answer your question, no.
Are there potential hazards with children or waterfowl getting hung up in this system?
I, I don't anticipate that being an issue. I don't think there's any, there shouldn't be any children swimming in this section of river. Waterfowl, it's, it's going to look similar to a floating oil boom, if anyone's seen that during an oil spill. It's, it's inflatable, kind of hard plastic boom. I, I don't foresee any, any ducks or geese that are in this part of the river not being able to get around it.
Okay, and you seemed a little bit unclear as to who, aside from this company, was going to take the lead on the maintenance of this and which department in town? And then I just want to make sure that it sounds like, you know, in the case of a potential storm, there might be a need to go and like release the boom or something. I, I imagine that's going to all be worked out. It doesn't sound like it is yet.
Earthplace would take the lead on operation maintenance, but if there was some scenario where they couldn't get there fast enough, we have, I have department staff that, that could do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Dave Rock, District Two. Tim, I just wanted to sort of circle back on the anchor points for this boom. I, I see maybe one is maybe the bridge and the second one is a large tree on the side of the bank. Is that typical to just tie the, one of the anchor points to a, a big tree on the side of the bank? Are there any other instances? Like, is that common? Because it just seems a little odd to me.
Yeah, the, the, the tree on one side, it's, it's a large tree. It's over three feet in diameter, so it's not going anywhere, but using, using webbing, poly webbing. According to the manufacturer who, who did meet us out there and scoped this out was per their suggestion, DOT was in agreement that that was okay with them. But it is pretty typical to, to fasten it various methods, either eye bolts, you know, in concrete or, or something more stable. Obviously, a wood stake or four by four in the ground wouldn't, wouldn't take, wouldn't take the force. A, a tree is pretty typical according to manufacturer.
Thank you.
Representative Steele.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jeff Steele, District Three. I just, I'm following up on a couple of questions from Representative Carson. I, I'm still a slight bit confused. I'm sure it's easily explained. In terms of how this is worded, it says approve for the amounts owed under agreements between the Town of Fairfield and Osprey Initiative as though we owe it now. So, I, I don't, I'm not sure what that means and maybe I missed it earlier. And the second was this item is fully funded using account, AKA the NIP fund. And in the letter, it says at no cost to the town, the laser, that the litter boom is also expected to perform these duties. So, I'm just, I'm a little, maybe I don't have it clear. I know 10,000 for service fees, 11,000 for the initial cost. What is the NIP fund? And two, why is it stated that we owe it? Like, it's amounts owed under the agreements that, again, haven't been approved by the Board of Finance. So, I just want to understand the wording and make sure I understand the cost again. Not necessarily the cost, but how it's funded. It's just a little confusing.
Sure. As far as the word "oh," I, I didn't write that. We don't owe anyone anything because it hasn't been approved. There's, there's been no purchase or, or purchase agreement executed, so the town doesn't owe anything at the moment until full approval. And as far as the NIP fund, that is money generated from the sale of the small alcoholic bottles that the state gives the town. I don't know CFO Harris or CEO Becker in, in the audience as far as what that balance is, but it is, it is significant that we, you know, the town generates revenue from the state from the sales of those bottles. It was in the Patch, article in the Patch last month that in the last six months, there was over 360,000 NIP sold in the town and we were, that generated over $8,000 in revenue, so that's, that's been happening for several years and very little money's been, been spent from this fund to, to fund cleanup and trash-related projects.
Thank you. And Mr. Becker is here.
Yeah, I would, yeah, just as a follow-up, I'd like to hear, David, I don't know if you have any clarity on that. The NIP fund balance and I assume all of it will come out of this quote-unquote "NIP fund."
Correct.
And how much is that balance? I wasn't, I didn't know about it.
Yeah, the, the, the current amount that we've taken in is 122,887.93 cents. So, roughly just a shy of 123,000 since the inception. It's taken a few years to get to that. It's, it's, you know, it ebbs and flows. How much comes in a quarterly basis? A very small amount has been spent out of it so far, only about $1,800. So, this is kind of the first crack at saying, you know, there's a substantial thing that meets, you know, the, the criteria on it.
How is that? That money, you said, that revenue collected again? What, what?
Well, we, we, we receive roughly $15,000 every six months into the account. So, you know, it's, it's, it's taken quite a few years. Started in 2021 to get to the point that we're now at the 122,000, so, you know, roughly 30,000 a year over four years.
But, but how, what, what is it based on? I, I didn't understand.
So, they take.
The, the NIP.
Mr. Becker, I don't think they understand.
I, I understand.
The NIP side of like little.
And I know nothing. How would I, how would you explain it?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a five cent surcharge on the NIPs now and that the state takes in and then a portion of that proceed is then sent down on a six-month basis to the municipality.
Understood.
So, the idea was that they were, I mean, in theory in Hartford, that they were causing all this litter and whatnot, the NIPs in particular, more than just cans. So, put a deposit on it and then also send money back down to municipalities in order to help them with cleaning up, you know, litter in general. So, it has to be spent on, you know, specifically, you know, it says the law requires municipalities receiving the funds to use them for environmental efforts to reduce the amount of solid waste generated in the municipality or the impact of litter. And, you know, it goes on to state some specifics within there.
Okay, that's, I didn't know about it. So, it, was that a 118,000 or so balance that'll come down and still have 100,000 or so left in that fund?
Yeah, it's about a, just shy of 123,000 as the last recording in there. And so, in six more months, we'll get another, you know, 15, 16,000 in it.
Thanks for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Representative Wolk.
Jay Wolk, District Five. Thanks, Tim, for doing what you're doing. So, for some of us that, you know, don't know that this affects my district. It also affects where I live, at Dogwood Green, which the Rooster River comes into. Garbage has been a problem for a long time. Garbage has been a problem for a long time. It's affecting so many people in my district. I've taken tours with our town attorney, a town attorney, a town um um engineer, Bill Hurley. Um and shown me what the river can do to 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 homes, and and it's all due to garbage. I was at a press conference, I was the only RTM member there that was that was uh right behind where the old Miller Volkswagen dealer was. Where the cemetery is, and um Bill took me down part of the river. And showed me there were mattresses in the river, there were chairs in the river, and this is causing flooding. So my point is, to this, to what I'm saying is, this is a needed thing. And let, you know, let it happen, Tim's doing the right thing, we need to stop the garbage. Coming from, you know, and 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 going outwards into people's homes is what happens when garbage. Blocks, brooks. So, thank you, Tim, for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this item? I know Representative Garskoff had one a while ago, I was going to people in person for a story. Anyone else online? All right, seeing none. Uh thank you very much, Mister Bishop.
Thank you.
Uh moving on, um I would, just to clarify, Representative Steel brought up a good point. Agenda items five and six have not been approved by the Board of Finance yet. That happens at their meeting tomorrow. So um that's contingent on them approving. If for some reason these are not approved tomorrow. Then we will not be voting on them next week. Um they can go on the consent calendar, but um that's up to each individual whether they want to vote for that or not. Um moving on, um we have Representative Hartigan. As well as Chairman of the Shellfish Commission, John Short, here to give us a presentation regarding the shellfish ordinance. This is Agenda Item Seven, with backup found on page one sixty-one.
Thank you, Mike Hartigan, District Three. Um put forth for your consideration are amendments to the existing ordinance for the Shellfish Commission. To uh permit the creation of alternate roles. Um I would need John Short, who's been the Chairman of the Shellfish Commission for some ten years. Um and he's put a lot of time and effort into a volunteer organization um that serves the town. Uh the primary tasks of the Shellfish Commission include seeding the shellfish beds, sampling the water. Uh to determine that water quality sufficient for shellfish to be edible. Um and a lot of the, a lot of these tasks are dependent on circumstances outside of human control. So precipitation events, um overall climate affects the growing patterns of the shellfish. Um and one of the difficulties they've been having is uh keeping a quorum at their meetings. And without a quorum, they're unable to conduct business as they need to. Um and due to the time-sensitive nature of some of their tasks, uh i- i- it's not. Going to be possible for them to set it up in such a way that they conduct their business, say, exactly four times. A quarter, they might ne- need to do it uh on the spot or at their meeting. Um so John's requested assistance in the form of a couple alternates. Um in my experience recruiting volunteers in the past couple of years. I've found that getting people to commit to a full-time role can be very difficult. Um getting people to commit to an alternate position uh could bring some extra people on. Um who John could uh help bring along for the future. Uh the work John's done with the existing program in Fairfield uh has been modeled by CTDEP. And they use it in their guidance for other communities. So this is a resource that we want to keep going in our town. Um and I'm proposing this amendment to facilitate that. Uh would turn any questions regarding actual shellfish over to John.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this uh item? It's, again, this is not a voting item this month, as of now. Um so we will be voting on this, um this is May, so we'll be voting on this in June. Any questions regarding this item? Uh Representative Colburn.
Colin Colburn, uh District Eight. Just out of curiosity, uh why not go down to overall membership rather than go up to with two alternatives?
Hi, John Short, Chairman of Fairfield Shellfish. Um the reason we wouldn't do that is we do a lot of projects and we have outreach, we actually need the people. So to go down in membership um wouldn't help our cause.
Makes sense, thanks.
Any other questions regarding this item? Uh seeing none. Thank you both so much, and Representative McDermott as well for sponsoring this. Um and hopefully we'll see you all next month. Uh moving on. We have Representative Carroll, who provide us information regarding the citation procedures and fines for zoning and inland wetlands. And watercourses violation ordinance. This is Agenda Item Eight, with backup found on pages one sixty-two to one sixty-six.
Thank you, Madam Madam Moderator, Chris Carroll, District Eight. Um there are two different um ordinances here, both um having to do with the ability to issue. Um citations. Um it it allows, and I'll just read this to you, um violations to be fined by staff. Um provided a more efficient alternative to enforcement. It's a common pros- process that exists in a lot of towns. It's based on the state statute, uh which you saw in your backup. Currently, if there's a violation, our only recourse is to bring a lawsuit in Superior Court for injunctive relief and requesting that. Uh court imposed the fines. In general, the enforcement uh by the court is significantly less efficient in what we're doing. It also takes a lot of time. It also takes significant funds because we have to go to outside counsel. It takes the time of the town attorney um to deal with this. Um so it allows for a much more efficient implementation of the existing ordinances that are on the books. Um and it's, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, um I understood, uh in in the backup. So are there any questions? Or you you can ask.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this ordinance? Uh Representative Shay.
Thank you, Chris Shay, District Two. So this would, this would be for zoning violations?
It's for both zoning violations and the inland uh waterways.
What about the Historic District Commission, if they have a, if they note a violation?
I I'm not sure. I haven't been asked that question before. I mean, it covers all zoning, so I don't know if there's subcategories or other categories to it. But I'll find out the answer for that and provide it to you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding this item? Seeing none. Uh yeah, Representative Carroll, if you'll get back to us on that, that would be wonderful. You can also just uh email it to me if you're asking anyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have Representative McCabe, uh President, to give us information regarding amendments to the taxation ordinance. This is Agenda Item Nine, with backup found on pages one sixty-seven. Again, um both what Representative Carroll just presented and this item and the item before, they're all ordinances that we're not voting on this month. We're voting on them in June.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Michelle McCabe, District Four. Um if you read the item in the backup, it's fairly self-explanatory. State statute um gives towns the uh ability to withhold uh licenses and permits. If uh the applicant is uh behind on taxes. Uh so we would be joining other communities in the state to enact this change to our. Our way of issuing permits, so I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Are there any questions representing this item? Representative Colburn.
Colin Colburn, District Eight. Um do we know of any other towns that have uh adopted this ordinance?
Uh yes, just doing uh just a search on the Google. Um East Hartford, Windsor, East Windsor, South Windsor, Bethlehem, Barkhamstead, Coventry, Kent. Putnam, Columbia, Basra, Cheshire East Line, Killingsworth, Coventry, Washington, I think Hartford. I can do a more extensive, yeah, okay.
You answered the question.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? Um Representative Carson.
Laura Carson, District Four. So prior to this, we never did this, like what what imp- what was the impetus now to re-? Getting that this came about? Was there something changed, you know?
It sounds like it was something that was just never enacted, like other things when statute gives the town enabling legislation. It's up to us to actually then create the ordinance, so it appears that we did not have an ordinance. And now that this was brought to our attention by the tax collector. And now that our records are also electronic, it makes it a lot easier for there to be this coordination between departments. So when a person comes for a permit, I'm sure that when he looks up the person, their delinquency is is in the file.
Do you know when the statute was passed? Is it in the backup? If I could Google, don't worry.
If you look in the backup, it the her first uh part of it has the statute listed, so you can look it up to see the date. But I think if I'm not mistaken, it was in the nineties. I mean, it was a while ago.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? Oh, I'm sorry, Representative Steel.
Thank you, Jeff Steel, District Three. Um. How, do you do you know um how many instances there are, like the tax collectors that, you know, it, does this happen? Three times a year? Does it happen ten times a year? Does it never happen? I'm just curious, that would be my first question.
I will forward that question to the tax collector. I have some information about how in the past, because we didn't have an ordinance. There wasn't an ability to e- to act upon, even if the tax collector was aware that there was a delinquency without an ordinance. There was no grounds to deny, but I'll ask the question so that we have that for next.
Yeah, I think that's good, and Representative Carson sort of alluded to that question. I think it's a good question. As I I've said before, when we put ordinances together, you know, we wanna talk about why we want. Ordinances in place, like what are we changing and why are we changing? I think, I'm just curious. Uh and Representative Carson was as well, why um this is put in place. Obviously, there's a lot of different. Um enabling legislation by the state that allows us to do various things. I'm sure we don't act on every single thing, so. Just, you know, like anything, why, why this one? Have have there been cases? Um that's for, and then the second question, so if if someone who lives in, say, Easton. And has property in Fairfield, but they're behind on their taxes in Easton. Would this impact Fairfield?
Uh it, well, to start with your second, then the first question that you asked. Um it's based on a property in Fairfield, taxes owed in Fairfield. So um it would not have any, if you were behind it, if you own multiple properties somewhere else, it would not. Have any impact on this. And then, if I may, to the first point that you made. Uh certainly a question worth asking, but I I would just add that it is possible that we haven't been tracking it. Because we haven't had an ordinance in the past, and I think that I would offer. One could make a decision based on whether or not we as a community feel like it's appropriate. For someone to take out a permit to do more work or something on property or start something on new property if if they are delinquent. And so just throwing that out there as a consideration.
Yep, no, I I I agree with you. I mean, it's something worth considering just on the 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 content of the the ordinance. I was just wondering what also kind of, what was the impetus? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? Uh Representative Pistilli.
Uh Sharon Pistilli, District Five. I phoned a friend to my uncle who was the first electman of Bethlehem. And just as a point of reference, he said that they've had this enacted in their town for quite a few years. My mom's the assistant tax assessor, she didn't answer.
I hope everything is okay between you and your mom. Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? Uh seeing none, thank you very much. Um again, all of the ordinances um will not be voted on, so you don't vote on those in committee. Um and before we adjourn, I would like to remind everyone that next week's meeting is on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. At Fairfield Lutlow High School in the lecture hall, so uh note the different location. Um and it is now eight thirty-six PM, and we will now break off into our respective committees. Um Representative Carroll, you have a question?
Uh yes, I do, Madam Moderator. I may have missed this. Item number two, um the joint committee meeting minutes. Do we have these minutes to vote on in our committees?
Um so you don't vote on any of those? You would just today, in your committee minutes, you would vote on the April committee minutes? That you had in, within your individual committee, so Ed and Rec online. You know, would have their Ed and Rec minutes from March. Um I mean, from April, and same thing with Public Health and Safety from April. Next week, we will be voting on, um I've started uh taking minutes for all our meetings. We've noticed through process that this um that we've been delinquent for at least uh five past moderators. So uh at least ten years um delinquent and not taking minutes at our joint committee presentations. So the joint committee presentations is basically what happens from seven thirty until we adjourn right now. And those will be approved at our regular meetings um the following month. But um so I went back to March and April, cause I had notes for those in my um things. And I did as best as I can to get those March and April minutes. Um but as notes, I have spoken with the town attorney. And the fact that for ten-plus years, we have not taken joint committee minutes. Um it luckily does not um invalidate any of our votes, or we would have ten-plus years of votes that were invalidated. Um so that does not occur, but for uh the benefit of the public and FOIA, um we will be taking those. And when I'm eagerly waiting for the rules to regulate to pass their committee um. You know, recommendations on, and we'll vote on that and have that. So they're meeting again this week, and that's lovely. Um anything else before we adjourn? Representative Steel?
Thank you, um Jeff Steel, District Three. Just a couple of questions, I I assume back to you. Um and I know we all got, we all got an email from from Kathleen Griffin that raised a couple of questions. Would we not wanna go back to this year, at least the calendar year, if we're gonna go back to March, go back to January and February? Is there a reason we wouldn't?
I think that's something, um if you have a question you wanna ask through me to the town attorney or through me to thing, um we could certainly do that. I think um again, you have to consider what, where's the cutoff? Again, this has been happening probably since the time the um US moderators switched over to this style of committees. And so I I mean, I guess. They could go back and ask for minutes for the last fifteen, or however many years we've been doing this. Um that would be a lot of work for the recording secretaries that would be asked to watch the videos that were hopefully in existence. I don't know how that would occur.
Yeah, that would probably be excessive. I was just thinking a calendar year, fiscal year twenty-five, or a calendar year twenty-five.
Yeah, it's certainly.
Versus starting in March, which is kind of a a random.
Yeah, it's certainly something I can say from a personal aspect. It took me some time to do the March and April. And I started those because they were relevant and recent enough to do so. Um so I I personally am not in favor or um going to be doing those. But that we can get the town, um one of the clerks to look at the videos, if that's some things people wanna vote on for January and February.
Okay, and then there was, there was one just correction, the joint committee meetings, but I I mean, I could bring it up next week, I guess.
Yeah, and so next week, we'll be voting on the minutes from the March and April joint committee meetings. The March uh budget hearings, three budget hearings. Um as well as the March. as well as the March regular meeting, no, I'm sorry, the April regular meeting. I apologize. And the May budget vote. So lots of them. I encourage everybody to go online to look at those. And also, as a note, I have asked all of the secretaries starting this week to write their minutes with rough draft on the top of the minutes. When they submit them to me in the next 48 hours and to the clerk, we will post them as rough draft. And then when you guys approve your minutes the month later, I will ask them to resubmit the minutes as approved. Any other questions? Thank you. I'm going to change the time. We're adjourning at 8:41 PM. We'll now break off into committees. Please remember to record online and at the bottom of the warning for numbers to call into your committees. Thank you.